Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Genoa Township, our Charter Township Planning Commission meeting for May tenth, two thousand and twenty-one. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we'd like to introduce all of the members and where they're located this evening. We'll start with Eric.
Eric Rauck from his home in Genoa Township.
Jill?
Jill Rickard from her home in Genoa Township.
Mary Ann.
Mary Ann from my home in Genoa Township.
Jim?
Jim Bartenson from my home in Genoa Township.
Glennis?
Glennis McBane from my home in Genoa Township.
And Jeff?
Jeff De Haynes also from my home in Genoa Township.
And this is Chris Grejek also from my home in Genoa Township. Sorry for those formalities, but they're part of the meeting schedule. I would at this time like to gain approval for the agenda. If I can get a motion?
A move?
Second?
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next up is a declaration of the conflict of interest. I don't think we've got any problems with that tonight, so we're going to open and close it just quickly because we have a postponed case and then some zoning things to take care of. So we'll close that part of the meeting. At this point, I'd like to give some instructions to those of you that have joined us. Thank you for joining us. And for those that are watching and wish to address the commission, there's a link to participate through Zoom, or you can use the telephone to call in. Information can be on how to connect via Zoom or by phone is on the township website and should be visible on your screen when you pull up the website. If you're participating by phone, please call the number and once connected, you'll have audio and you'll be able to hear the meeting, but your voice will be initially muted. When you hear the call to the public, please raise your hand in the Zoom application or press star seven in the phone to alert the moderator that you'd like to speak. We will select individual participants by name or by referencing their last four digits of their phone number. When you're selected to speak, please speak slowly, state your name, spell your name, provide your address and begin your comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes per person, and we ask that you please try to not repeat comments that have already been addressed. Please note that any inappropriate languages or language will result in immediate disconnection from the call. At this time, I'd like to have our initial call to the public which affects our agenda this evening. Is there anyone who would like to open or are not open, but include something in the agenda that is not already there?
Mr. Chair, we have two people that are participating as attendees in the meeting. I guess we'll just give them a second if they want to hit star nine if you're calling in, or raise your hand through the Zoom platform if you'd like to address the planning commission before they move on to the agenda items. Okay, I'm not seeing a response.
All right, hearing none. Now it will close the call to the public and open up hearing number one, which has been requested postponement due to an insufficient statutory notice review of the special use application, environmental impact assessment and site plan for a proposed twenty-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-one square foot addition to the existence St. George Shrine of the Prophet Elijah Retreat Center located at the Our Lady of the Fields Camp at thirteen ninety-one Kellogg at the southwest corner of Kellogg and McLemmons Roads as petitioned by the Kelvin Catholic Church of the United States of America. Do we have any questions, members? Because we're postponing this, we'll just see if there's anything out there that anybody needs clarification on?
We are postponing to a special meeting on June second, correct?
That's correct. And I guess for the benefit of the public or those attendees joining us this evening, staff realized last week that there was a mistake in the required three hundred foot mailing. We've got two different properties we're sending out notice to and an entire sheet of labels got missed. One of the neighbors stopped in, was upset that he didn't receive his letter. His neighbor got it, but he didn't. So we quickly realized that we had made a mistake and because of that, this item cannot be heard this evening and will need to be postponed to try and accommodate the fact that this is, you know, this is our mistake. It's my mistake. We have arranged for a special meeting to hear this item on Wednesday, June second at seven PM. That has already been sent to the paper for publication and letters were mailed to all of the adjacent property owners and triple checked today. So that should be good to go for June second. I also, I guess we'll just add, we did send out twenty-one letters. This hearing was put in the paper, which is why we put it on the agenda this evening. I do think we should have a public hearing just for anybody who wasn't aware that it was being postponed to have the ability to address the commission before we move to postpone.
At this point, will we call to the public?
After discussion, I think it would be appropriate to call.
Any member discussion questions?
No, but I'll have no problem doing a motion to postpone to the next special scheduled meeting of June second at seven PM.
All right, well, we have opened a call to the public first. But you have a couple of people, Kelly, don't we?
I'm showing two people. I don't know if they're interested in commenting or not, but we can open it up. If they're interested in speaking, now would be the time if you open the call to the public for them to do so.
I opened the call to the public to do so for those that are online or on phone.
Okay, do you see a hand up? Mike and Dory Marion. You've been added. You'll need to unmute yourself and then you can address the plea.
Yes, I just want to make sure we're going to have a chance at that special meeting to voice any concerns or issues that we find relevant.
Absolutely. That's what the meeting's all about. We just have to bring it up tonight just in case someone like yourself unfortunately came tonight and didn't know that it was canceled or that they were postponing, I should say. And it will be June the second, which is a Wednesday. It's a little bit different and it's also at seven o'clock, not six thirty. So mark both of those things down so you can make sure that.
I just would like to request, I know I'll be speaking on behalf of several of the residents around here. Everything I have is based on your ordinances and zoning law. Basically, I'm a need more than three minutes, but about six, seven minutes, and I can handle everything from our perspective. Is that going to be possible at the June meeting?
I don't see why not. If you can, if there's several people that would like to even defer their minutes to you, I mean, that's parliamentary how you do it. You know, if a couple of people wanted to stand up and say, I'd defer my three minutes to the gentleman behind me and you could come in behind them, or we'll just give you, you know, you can tell us who you're speaking on behalf of.
Okay, and then this meeting in June hopefully is in person?
No, 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 there's no meetings that'll be in person. Kelly, can you clarify when we may be able to meet in person?
Yeah, so our goal is to be in person. I think the township's desire is to go back to normal in-person meetings. We are somewhat restricted or completely restricted right now by the Department of Health and Human Service orders that limit how many people we can have in the building. So the meeting is planned to be held via Zoom, but there is still an option if between now and then we have the ability to do an in-person meeting and get people together in the boardroom, that would be our goal.
How much, how much space do you need to hold a meeting?
So in our boardroom right now with the social distancing requirements, we can get about eighteen members of the public when we put all the chairs six feet apart. Beyond that, there's also a group called Unmasked Michigan that's been going to a lot of meetings. And if we get so the requirement is six feet of distance and everyone wearing masks. So if we get one person that's not comfortable or chooses not to wear a mask, that also would cause for us to have to adjourn the meeting. So it's not necessarily all about the spacing.
Okay.
Things at play.
Too bad. All right, well, that's all I had.
Okay, we'll accommodate, Mike. We'll try to accommodate whatever you're trying to get across, especially if, like you say, you're speaking for a number of people. It will actually speed the meeting by having just one person go through everything, so.
Right.
All right?
All right, thank you, Chris.
Thank you for attending this evening.
Yep.
Anyone else, Kelly?
Okay, I've got one other caller. They haven't raised their hand. For caller that's in there, if you're interested in speaking, please press star nine. We'll give just one more second to see if they're interested to raise their hand. So far, they have not indicated that they're interested to raise their hand.
All right, if they raise their hand anytime during, I mean, we can accommodate some at this point, I'm going to close the call to the public then. Ask for any final questions or comments from the commission? Hearing none, I will look for a motion.
Chair, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to an open public, on public hearing number one. I'll make a request to postpone that meeting until our special meeting on June second at seven PM. This is for the Prophet Elijah Retreat Center located at the Our Lady of the Fields Camp at thirteen ninety-one Kellogg.
Any support? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So moved. All right, we're going to open the public hearing number two, which is a review of zoning ordinance text amendments to Article eleven, the general provisions, Article twenty-five definitions of the zoning ordinance. And at this point, I'll hand it off to Kelly. I think.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I mentioned that I was frantically thinking I could put together a PowerPoint presentation today, which is about half done. So I'm going to start with this and when I run out of slides, we'll go to the ordinance. So as many of you know, I've been trying to get an ordinance amendment pushed through for the entire zoning ordinance for quite some time. We have had a couple of things come up recently that have kind of elevated the need and the desire to take a look at Article eleven and then supplement to that Article twenty-five, which is definitions. This is kind of the catch-all section of our ordinance. It's general provisions, which, which covers a lot of ground. Specifically, the most changes you're going to see here are related to like accessory buildings and accessory structures. So I'll just kind of get through this. I'll try to be quick about it. The first change has to do with permitted projections. So the current ordinance provides for what types of things can project into the required setbacks. And it's fairly comprehensive in our current ordinance. It includes accessory structures and includes things that are attached to a home. And I'm trying to simplify it a little bit by creating this section just for architectural features. So I've tried to highlight on the table what the main changes are. And that's one that I'm adding fireplaces and chimneys that are eight feet wide or less being able to project into a setback. So if your home is right on your thirty-foot side yard setback and you want to have a chimney, it could encroach into that setback. So the building line of the home would have to meet the setback, but a chimney could project into that yard. We've also added a new, a new row for side yards ten feet or less in the Lake Shore Resort District. Years ago, we created a situation where you could reduce your side yard setback in Lake Shore Resort to five feet, but we never changed this table. So we did have a situation where there were things able to project into a five-foot side yard by three feet, which would leave only a two-foot gap between the projection and the property line. So we've added this new row that says if the side yard setback is ten feet or less, you can only project two feet. And then we've also kind of added a catch-all that architectural elements can't be in any case less than three feet from the property line. So that table in the markup is really confusing because it was changed so much and that was what led me to try and do a PowerPoint to show it. Some of the other changes were there's a section that allows for height extensions, those things that are allowed to be taller. Flagpole height is right now, I think forty feet in the current ordinance. Our flagpole, our beautiful flagpole at the township hall is sixty. And we have allowed sixty, I think the flag star bank was sixty. So we've kind of by standard allowed sixty-foot tall flag poles. So I wanted to just incorporate that in the ordinance. And then also I just added in some discretion. If there's an architectural feature that exceeds, the planning commission would have the ability to look at that. So next relates to temporary buildings and structures. Typically, what this has been is like a construction trailer. So if you're building a home or a building and you need to have a construction trailer on site, we're proposing adding some language that would limit that to twelve months. We've had a few projects that the, maybe it's a homeowner done project and it's kind of dragged out. And so we'd like to see if you're going to have a temporary trailer or temporary building or structure for construction that you've got to get it done within that twelve months and then get the structure out of there. We also currently have, it needs to be removed after a building permit is issued, and we'd like to change that to after the land use permit expires just so that we have some control over requiring removal of a temporary building or structure. And then the other change was adding language for non-construction-related buildings and accessory structures to be treated as accessory structures. So this would be like your tents or your tarps. You know, some people you can go buy like a tent structure to put your RV in. Currently, the ordinance doesn't really have any language about how to regulate those temporary structures. So we're just adding a blurb in here that if you're putting up a tent structure, even if it's temporary, it's going to be treated as an accessory structure.
Kelly?
Yes?
Should there be a reference in there? Is something regarding temp, you know, that it's not permanent? Well, never mind. I get it. Just answer my own question.
Okay. So the next section has to do with open storage, parking and repair of vehicles. Our code enforcement officer was the driving force in a lot of the changes you see in this section. A lot of it is just kind of clarifying. And just for the purposes of this discussion, boats, trailers, tractors, RVs, commercial vehicles, that's really what this is intended to regulate. The first major change is requiring there to be a principal building on the property in order to store those types of vehicles on the property. So if we have a situation which would be illegal where you have like a barn on a piece of property without a house, you can't store vehicles and equipment there. There needs to be a home in order to store equipment or vehicles on the property. So requiring that anything stored be licensed and registered. In a residential district, we're proposing limiting the number of, again, boats, RVs, tractors to two if they're twenty-four feet or less or one if they're twenty-four feet or larger than twenty-four feet. So for those of you that maybe live on the lake and you have an RV and a boat, this would limit kind of how much you can store on your property.
And you mean, in this, in this case is out in the open?
Correct.
So motorcycles, jet ski with a boat. Yes, it's got to be inside.
If it's right, if it's in your garage, this would not apply. This is for somebody that's parked next to your house or behind your house or in your driveway. It's a good point. We've also added, and there's really nothing in the ordinance right now that would allow someone who has, say, a rowboat or a canoe or a kayak to store it in their waterfront yard. So we added language that if there's a boat only fifteen feet long or less, that could be stored in the waterfront yard. And then also right now, if you wanted to park, let's say you live on the lake and you put your boat in the water, but you still have a trailer and you want to keep that trailer in your driveway. Right now, you're limited. You can only put it for a certain number of months, you can store it in your driveway. So we're proposing to relax that standard to allow for an RV, a boat and a trailer to be in the front yard driveway of a waterfront lot, but it has to be twenty-foot setback from the front lot line. So the next standard, the current ordinance says you have to park these types of things on an improved driveway, but it doesn't really define what an improved driveway is. So we're proposing to include some standards for gravel. So it could be gravel and there's some language to explain what that is. And then also there's nothing in the ordinance right now that would say allow for you to have company over that parks in your grass. We've had some situations where someone's having an event, graduation party, the people come and park on their grass and the neighbors don't like it. So we're putting some language in here to allow for it's pretty generous, I think, ten times a year, not more than forty-eight hours. You could have parking in your grass for a special occasion.
Do we think we want ten times a year? I mean, it seems, I don't want people parking in grass very often.
Right. It's, you know, it's tough around the lakes. You know, a lot of those folks, you have company over for summer weekends and I think that was our thought is that if people had family over during the summer on the lakes, they could do it and.
There's just not enough room. You know, and my area is is as big as any as far, has as much room as any. But we still run into problems with people parking on lawns and parking on, you know, neighbors' properties and all kinds of things. And generally just work through it with people that are there. I think forty-eight hours is longer than I expected, but other than that, and the ten times a year, you'd have to be a pretty good party head. We'll have forty-eight hour parties every, you have ten of them. Have to be Jeff De Haynes.
Me?
Oh, did I say that a lot? I'm sorry, Jeff. Go ahead, Kelly, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Well, I mean, this could certainly, if the commission wants to see these numbers tweaked a little bit, I mean, there's no real science to what we selected. We were having an issue with somebody who had a large family. They had extended kids that were, you know, coming home a lot on the weekends and it was becoming an issue for the neighborhood. But it was repetitive. It was every weekend, every day. So this was attempting to try and corral that situation a little bit, but.
But it sounds like this would allow that situation.
Well, just ten times a year, though. This was occurring much more frequently than that. The complaint that we were getting.
Kelly, before you move on, I apologize, your sixth point, the one RV boat trailer within the twenty-foot with twenty-foot setback. My neighbor, my neighbor and myself found out that I am one of those people has two front yards. I'm on Merrill Lane and Sharp Drive. I personally store a utility trailer and a boat trailer. Oh, that's kind of my front yard is my backyard. I don't have any other yards. So.
Want to ask for variance, Jeff?
Let alone, I live next door to someone with more than ten vehicles, so. I just, I don't know that that totally works for everybody.
Right, let me go back to that section of the ordinance.
I just need clarification. This is only for waterfront lots that we're talking about now?
Yes.
Okay.
So it's this section C here on waterfront lots. Nothing can be parked in the waterfront yard. We're adding in that you can have boats fifteen feet.
So maybe to Jill's point, I happen to be one of the two people not on waterfront here, so I'm good. I hope.
I mean, the way it is right now, you can do it May first to September thirtieth of each year. And this would change it to you can have one on your driveway as long as it's twenty feet setback from the front lot line. And obviously corner lots, I mean, I don't think we're talking.
I think you're going to run into people that are just going to say, Kelly, I have a a speedboat and a pontoon boat, and if they have enough room on their property to park both of those, they're going to say, ticket me. Because what you're saying essentially is if you have one boat, you're fine. If you have two, you're going to have to store one of them and you're going to have to incur that cost. And you know, you already have costs involved with living on the lake and having a boat and having a trailer for it to be on and and all those types of things and having it registered and the litany of things. I know, I mean, that's, that's going to be the typical response is, okay, how much is the ticket? Because.
Be concerned about turning our waterfront into a dock, you know, a trailer yard, you know, that it's going to be a horrible look for people there.
That's not, yeah, that's not what I'm describing. I mean, I can, I can think of probably a half a dozen homes in my neighborhood alone where they have a speedboat, they have a pontoon boat. One of them, the pontoon boat probably goes in their main parking area because it's a little bit bigger. And then the speedboat goes wherever they can find a spot for it for the winter. It might be backed in behind a garage on grass. It might be next to the house on grass. Nobody's ever noticed it or said anything. I mean, it's, you know, the front of my house is the lake. So when you're talking about storing all this stuff, I'm looking at storing it in my backyard. So I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I do understand that there are boats and motors and you know, there's a couple of people along Hughes Road that constantly have stuff like that, you know, all seasons. And it's not because they're storing their own stuff. It's because they're fixing stuff for other people. So I can, you know, I wonder about the spirit of the ordinance, if there's anything in that ordinance for those types of things, you know, running a business out of a, you know, a lakefront home.
Garage.
Garage, yeah.
I mean, we do have a home occupations ordinance that would probably disallow that situation that you've described. Because there can be no outside evidence of a home occupation, so.
Like a sign that says we do small engines and boat motors and
So you're allowed a sign, I think.
Helicopters.
You can have a sign, but the.
Jeff, that's what I'm talking about.
Yes.
Being closed. And keep in mind, you are allowed to do side yard. So if you're, and I know a lot of times on the lakes, there's not a lot of room.
There isn't side yard, yeah. My lot's fifty-eight feet wide.
The ordinance would allow you in the situation of a pontoon and a speedboat, if you could get one to the side of your house, it would allow that.
I think the only people that it really affects are the people of the neighborhood, and if the people of the neighborhood don't care for it, they're going to tell you.
They do.
You know, it, because everybody, you know, lake people generally talk to each other other than, you know, we're talking about access and we don't want to talk about access. But no, I think there's some good stuff here, but it also is a little bit, I don't know. It requires a little bit too much on my part. I used to store both of my boats. I don't store both of my boats at the house now, but if I lost the spot where I keep my pontoon boat, I'd bring it back and park it in the driveway or pull it back up on the shore in the front yard like I used to. Nobody's ever said anything. I mean, it's winter, you know. I don't know how else to explain it. It's you know, everybody finds.
This is, this is giving a little more leniency to allow for it to occur.
Well, what about things like docks then? You know, because most, most of the docks along the front or the side where I'm on, you pull them out of the water, they pull them on wheels. And it's a big, long, you know, fifty-foot long, four-foot wide contraption that has wheels underneath it basically, and that's all stored on the lakeside. I mean, in this case, it's not the front. Okay, legally, but you know.
Docks and mooring apparatus are permitted in the waterfront yard. So those you could pull out of the lake and leave in your waterfront yard in the winter.
Okay.
So here, I mean, we could maybe add the ability to have, because what I took out was that limit on, you know, May first through September thirtieth, we could do one a year and then relax it for the winter months for the non-lake months, if you wanted to allow a second one.
I guess I'd be more interested in what people that are buying waterfront want to see. Do they want to see a? I guess I'd be more interested in what people that are buying waterfront want to see. Do they want to see everybody storing their boats in their yards and? You know, it might be creating more of a junkyard look for the entire waterfront is my concern for the people that. And and I don't know what people here are saying about it to know. You know, I.
Person who's spent. Four to six or eight hundred thousand dollars on a house is not gonna have their front yard look like a junkyard. They're gonna have a dock. They may have a boat. That's gonna be shrink wrapped in the front yard. Those types of things. It's not, Joe, it it really isn't a case of like a bunch of stuff, just trailers and things hanging all over the place. You need trailers for boats.
Yep, I have a water, I have a waterfront home. I pull my dock up every year, but I store my boat offsite, so. It looks nice. You know, and I just don't know what the community is saying about it. I don't live on the waterfront here, so, you know, I'd be more. More concerned about what waterfront people are saying in in the area.
Is part of the complexity is because parking is so limited on the roads that if you have. More. In your driveway than if people are coming, you have more cars in the road. Is that one of the complexities is safety, a safety an issue? In that respect, Kelly?
Yeah, I think that's why you're seeing that that requirement of a twenty foot.
Yeah.
About getting. So I'm hearing support.
I just.
Well, Kelly, this is based upon what. Your ordinance officer is coming back with, hey. That being a little more lenient, it would be would help. With enforcement.
Absolutely.
Or not. Twerking off people as it is.
Yeah, I think our thought was, you know what, if you put your, if you put your boat in the water for the summer and then you can't put your trailer back in your driveway, that just didn't make sense, so. Boat goes in the water, your trailer goes back where it always is. And at least you're allow that space to store your boat. And your trailer, obviously people with multiple boats, that becomes a little more complicated.
To Mary Ann's point. I think what you'll find, and in my case, I know it's it's absolutely true. If I can find a place, if I got a friend who's got a a farm or something like that where I can. Drop my trailers off behind their barn and leave them there for the the summertime, I'll do it because it gives me more room around my house. It's those people that don't have that opportunity and, you know. Don't want to spend another, you know. Whatever it is, five or six hundred bucks to store their trailer for the summertime. You know, I think it's a good thing that the. Like you say, to leave at least one room for one trailer to be out there. The the only other thing that I heard, Kelly, was. And a limit of fifteen foot for a boat in the front yard storage. I have a rowing shell. It's twenty feet long. It's powered by me. It's about two feet wide. Does that mean I have to bring it around the side of the house? Or get it out of the front yard or out of my lakeside yard?
Well, I mean, the way that the ordinance is written today. You can't have anything in that waterfront yard. So we're proposing fifteen, but. I was trying to figure out like, how long is a kayak? How long is a canoe? How long is a rowboat?
Or do you go to, I mean. Something that isn't powered by electric or or. Or gasoline motor. I mean, it's not gonna be anything that big then. Because otherwise it'd have a motor for it. I don't know. Fifteen feet fine is fine. I'll just. Soft the end of my. But here.
Yeah, I've got a couple of thoughts. Been focusing in on these restrictions in regards to lake lots. With the exception of some of our older lake communities, I would imagine many of them also have subdivision bylaws that would. The different things too that. Subdivisions would want to see. The second thing is, and it's something you kind of touched on there, Chris, is. My understanding of this is that these restrictions also apply to. The fifteen acre parcel with a barn on it. And that we're communicating the number of boats they can have on that and stuff too, even if it's could be completely wooded, no one will ever see it. Am I accurate in reading that, Kelly? And was there ever any conversation about? You know, easing those restrictions for larger lots, because I think at first we all think about these. Quarter acre lake lots and how everything is really tight in that. But is there any thoughts about some of our larger agricultural lots? That could handle more of the. Open storage and parking that we're looking at without really being a nuisance to any neighbors?
You know, I I think that there was, I I believe we have a few. Situations in our community where people are storing. Not only their RVs, but maybe some friends and nance and uncles. And I think Sharon has dealt with some complaints associated with it. Looks like my neighbor's got an RV parking lot. Behind his house. So we did have some discussion about what's what's acceptable. You know, for somebody to have. A couple of trailers. And a boat, you know, and this is definitely, there's room for improvement here. We want to put some type of a sliding scale associated with how much land you have, how much you're allowed to store. I I think that would be fine. I guess I'll I'll also mention that, you know, a lot of enforcement on this section is. Primarily complaint based. So I think it's important to realize, well, this does apply and regulate the whole community. This is not going to get adopted and we're not going to go out and start tagging people's. RVs because you've got three and you're only allowed two.
I also think about the contractor. That runs their much of their operations out of a barn or something in the back, you know, maybe they do have a large country estate. And and have a couple of construction trailers or something along those lines, or they work on cars and. And, you know, in a way, this could really impede that ability as well.
Yeah, so I think that's a good, a good comment. Maybe I can. Work a little bit more on trying to create this section that would allow. More, more stuff. For more land.
But again, maybe even with some either in a garage or. Somehow blocked from view of others.
I I have to agree with Jill on that too, because, you know, I have ten acres, but I back up a big sub. And I could park all my, and I will. If I can do it, I would park all my stuff at the far end of my property so they can look at it and I don't have to. There's a lot of people that'll do that, and then they're the ones that are impacted having to see all that simply because. I have the acreage and I get the 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 value of being able to have more stuffed. Stuff on a larger land. You know, I I could. Yeah, I I think you need something that can't be viewed by others or something because. There's a lot of people that are very inconsiderate out there. And I wouldn't do it, but I'm just saying, you know. You know, it's just, you know, I could see somebody easily wanting to shove it in the back corner of their lot and out of out of their view, but in the view of a bunch of other neighbors.
But I also think about the contractor, the the tradesman who literally works out of their trailer and they haul their trailer every day to their to their site. So got a boat. Trailer's gonna be in your driveway. Plus, you're gonna have your construction trailer too.
Yeah, that's a tough one. The ordinances are really strict on home occupations, so. Somebody that's doing, you know, a landscaper, a builder that's working out of their home. The home occupations ordinance really requires there to be. Very limited outside evidence that there's a business being run from the property. We know what happens, you know, especially when when you've got large lots or someone has acreage, it's happening. But, you know, technically, that type of situation is not really encouraged in the ordinance. So I'm hearing. You know, maybe some support for allowing additional structures for more additional vehicles on more land. Provided there's adequate screening and it's not visible or nuisance to the neighbors.
The other thing you have to, Kelly, the other thing you have to have is in that that case is someone who cares that you just. Told them they can only do it if they hide it. Because most of the people that are belligerent enough to put up. Like like Glenn is was saying, you know, being considerate and put it in front of a bunch of other people. They're not gonna care if you you're supposed to screen it. And you, we can ticket them. And. You know, that type of thing, but I think I think of the guy down there, what was what lake was that? I don't know, it was one of the lake fronts and you had to drive through his his yard to get to the other yard.
Bad Keel Lake.
There you go. Bed Keel Lake. And this guy had basically a junkyard. And, you know, we tried for years and years and years to. I mean, that's an extreme, but, you know, if you got someone who's belligerent, I don't know that it cost him a whole heck of a lot of money because he just said no. And he never came to meetings and he never responded to things. So. Are we? Just kind of treading water and and and, you know, let the the law abiding folks, well, you know, abide by what we have to say and knows that. Have a junkyard already aren't gonna care. And just go from that. I mean, that that's probably the. You know. The ecosystem of of life anyhow.
Right. So do you also want me to look at maybe allowing a second? A second vehicle or trailer or boat in a waterfront yard? Did I hear, I I know, Christie, you were interested in that. Is there any other?
The the thing is, people don't, people that have lakefront, for the most part, don't want both boats, or if they have to, they don't want them in their yard. They don't want any of their boats in their yard. But the alternative is to store them, and Jill, I'm sure that costs you a couple of bucks to to store a boat over the winter time. And if everybody had to do that, all of a sudden, you know, there'd have to be some storage places. Come online because there's probably not enough in the area. But. I think one is fine. I think, you know, if you gotta make arrangements for a second one. You know, make arrangements. Because two, in in my instance, for for an example, if I had two trailers in my yard, I could park maybe two cars. Because otherwise everything else would be taken up. And, you know. I have a parking unit. I mean, it's it's not like it's still driveway, so. I don't know, I think we're probably. Giving fair warning when we say you can have one. If someone wants to have two, then they can tangle with the ordinance. Folks, go ahead, Jill.
I was gonna say, I like your idea about, you know, being able to have your kayaks in the back if they wanted to, you know, for through the summer and stuff like that. I can see where. Non gas powered things are something that they'll want to be able to have in their yard. And the on the waterfront side.
You know.
Go ahead, Jim.
I hear statements like, well, you got a trailer and then he. He's got a boat and he's got a trailer because he uses a trailer for his business. The residential district. It's gotta be residential. And. You know, if somebody. Has got a boat and a van or business van. Far as I'm concerned, he's got to. Park one or both of them offsite. If he lives in a residential area, I. I I think we gotta be real conscious of the. The effect on the neighborhood and these kinds of things.
The the more you allow people to store, the the more traffic's gonna be on the road. And the 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 roadways around the lakes are so narrow anyway. In my mind, I just think, you know, the the minimal is better for safety, for visibility, for less congestion, for less. You know, garbage. For lack of a better word, for less, you know. Things being parked in your in your driveway and on your lawn.
And I think we have to be pretty specific too, if we're gonna go that far as to say, like a contractor, for instance, can't park his vehicle. You know, there are people who drive big vans that don't have any writing on them that aren't in business, you know, they maybe even run their business out of it. I've seen them where they'll get a magnetized white. Panel and put it on the side of their truck because then they can't, you can't see the the writing. I mean, they could, they'll go to great lengths. So. You know, I guess we we're looking at a general rule, I guess, rather than being very specific. And I don't think that that's the wrong thing to do because the more specific, the more. They'll figure out a way around it.
And for me, I think of it as you fit whatever you want in your driveway. I I don't care about your driveway. I mean. You you paved it, it's there. It's, I just don't like seeing everybody with crap all over their lawn. But that's me.
I agree with that too. I I just would also say that, you know, as long as they they can park what they want in their driveway, as long as they still meet the minimum parking requirements for that district. You know, most people have to have room for two parking spots.
That's a good point. I think we should add that, the twenty foot setback in addition to providing. The minimum, maintaining the minimum, stop that minimum parking.
I'm I'm using in my mind, I'm using an example, a place I go for for Bible study on Wednesday mornings, like there's a boat trailer there. And there's the trailer that the gentleman who lives there uses for his construction business. And it goes away every single day. Like, wow, he's maxed out. He can't do anything else, like. Seems kind of silly. He's got plenty of room in his driveway to put something else we needed to.
You know, we're we're in a. Place in our world right now where. Work and home aren't as differentiated as they used to be. And I really don't see that trend shifting too much, a little bit. Now that I think that was is a. Continued trend. And so, you know, whether you're a landscaper or carpenter or whatever it may be. At some point, some of these restrictions. Start to impede on people's abilities. Potentially to to. Make the living they're seeking to do. So I just want to be careful a bit when we think about this a little. In those regards as well. I I'm grateful that you're going back, Kelly, and you're looking at the number of trailers and things like that, but. You know, just. You know, I think there are subdivisions in communities that that, you know, create stricter standards than this. And, you know, if that's what you're seeking to to live in, then I think. Those are the type of things you would seek out in a residential area that you're in. But as far as like an overarching. Community township standard. In my opinion, we should create like a baseline and let subdivisions and all kind of create the the. Higher standards, maybe. Whatever that might be that they seek in those communities. So. Just kind of a thought when we think about a township ordinance. You know, I think there's a balance between what looks nice, but also. A balance between giving people the opportunity to. To kind of operate and function day to day. Within their work and home environments that that give them those property rights and all that they're seeking, so.
That's a good point. I know in the recession, two thousand nine. Prior to that, we didn't allow someone to use like a barn or a detached structure for a home business. And it was really what was happening in the world at that time that we decided, you know what? People got to make money somehow, and if a guy's a cabinet maker and wants to use this barn that he has or garage that he has for that. We should encourage that. So we did. Relax the home occupation standards to allow work within a detached accessory building. And maybe providing the sliding scale for more more land, more stuff might might also help to support that. So I think I've got good direction there. I'll keep moving on. The next part here is we're just clarifying the current ordinance talks about. Commercial vehicles with a rated capacity over one ton. Which was really difficult because there's a lot of vehicles out there that have a rated capacity over one ton. So we've looked to use US Department of Transportation gross vehicle weight as a way. As a way to define what's a commercial vehicle. So you can do class one and class two on residential property and then not more than one class three heavy duty pickup truck. Not more than fourteen thousand pounds. That's a big truck. And then, of course, exempting out. Farm related. Equipment. And then the last couple items here are, you know, a work vehicle that's used for transporting hazardous chemicals. Can't be parked or stored in a residential district. Not allowing open storage, parking, repair and a piece of vacant property. And then lastly, not allowing things within the public right of way, blocking sidewalks, pathways or easements. So with that, I'll move on unless there's questions. The next changes were in wireless communication facilities. So these are kind of generic term is cell cell towers. And we added in a small cell wireless equipment. We were approached by a company a couple of years ago that wanted to start putting. Towers, they were smaller towers, but they were towers in. towers. They were smaller towers, but they were towers in road right of way. Um, and so we realized that there was kind of a hole in this ordinance. It really wasn't defined. So we've added in small cell wireless as something we would regulate. Additionally, um, this is kind of a big change for us. I'm proposing and looking for feedback on adding the ability to build a cell tower, a hundred and twenty foot monopole, subject to special land use approval in agricultural districts where you have at least forty acres. When you get a little bit further in, there's also a requirement that you have to show that there's no feasible alternative to that location. And that there's a thousand feet of setback from any offsite residential structures. For those of you that drive Brighton Road, you may know that there is and have Verizon, there is a dead zone um, around Backey Lake. I know we mentioned that Forest Beach Drive. If you're on the phone through there, you drop the call almost every time. When you look at the districts that we currently allow a cell tower, there's no physical way to get service to that area. And cell is becoming one of those essential services. It's one of those things particularly with the world right now and people needing access to internet or, or wireless. Um, we're, we're just seeing a need potentially. So, um, this is a big change. But I, I, I think it's probably overdue and I'm looking for feedback, support or opposition either way.
Again, they'd be limited in some way. We don't want them popping up in a lot of places.
They've gotten, gotten a lot smaller too, because we did something a while back where the water tower uh, over behind, um, Brighton Ford, that's in Genoa Township, I think, or, or annexed. Um, they were putting, uh, cell tower equipment on that rather than building a tower, um, which I thought was kind of a unique or an interesting way of doing it because it's already there. Um, and could it be something that maybe even the tower at Genoa, it has over by Clary College? Um, maybe that helps the, the spread of the, the cellular better. And all it looks like is, you know, some type of, uh, it doesn't look obtuse. It, it looks, um, I don't know, almost like a wind type of, deflector or something on, on the, 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 the tower. It doesn't look like, oh, there's a, you know, an antenna sticking out the side of it or whatever. Um, they just look like flat panels that are, you know, either around the base or under the base of it. Um, and I just think of that. And the other thing, uh, you, you were talking about a thousand feet around it with residential. Um, the ordinances that I've seen in other areas that are, have more of these towers is to, to provide a, a fall area. So any direction that it falls, it doesn't hit anything. So if it's a hundred and fifty feet tall, you have a two hundred or a two hundred and fifty foot, uh, fall protection. Um, because a thousand feet takes somebody with acreage and turns them into somebody with a couple of lots of property they can use. Because you start cutting thousands of feet out of that if, if they have a cell tower on their property or near them. That forty acre piece that you're talking about, all of a sudden gets kind of small. So I'm, it's just my two cents on it.
And there is currently a setback in here. Um, I'm pretty sure that says it has to be setback equal to equal to the height. I just felt like this was such a big deviation for us and agricultural is typically surrounded by residential. So that I came up with a thousand. There's a, a farm in particular that I kind of thought would be a good spot to fill that hole. Um, and you could easily get that, but, but you're right. It, it really prohibits their ability to subdivide their farm or do anything with their farm they choose to in the future.
Go ahead, Glennis.
I'm sorry, I just have a question, um, because I did read, read this earlier today and I just could not make the connection even looking it up in the, in the dictionary. What's colocation mean?
Colocation, um, is, is precisely what Chris was just talking about. So we do allow location on our water towers. Um, or on an existing cell tower. So you might.
So sharing.
Yep, exactly. Sharing.
Okay, okay, sharing. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Helps me.
Would, would it be prudent to also consider that, um, if, if you can't have one within, you know, a certain proximity of another one, so that geographically you're trying to limit your, your locations?
Yeah. So there's, there is a section that says, um, you have to provide a map that illustrates existing and known facilities. Um, and then you also have to demonstrate the need. So you have to provide as part of the approval process for this a map that shows all of the other cellular towers in the area. And you have to show that there is an absolute need um, for the facility that you are looking to place it on. So I don't know if that gets to your question, but, um, the, the way this ordinance is written, you couldn't just come in and say, I don't, I don't want to deal with the guys that own that T-Mobile tower. I just want to put up a new one. Um, if there is the ability to co-locate or to use an existing tower, this ordinance would would give the, the planning commission, the board, the ability to say, I can improve a new one when you've got, you have an option.
Right.
So I, uh, for me, I'm fully endorsement, endorsing of colocation. Um, but more than cellular, I think the need for broadband is bigger. But, and that is to Eric's point from before, uh, many people are now work from home uh, in their jobs. They have to have internet access. And this is about voice services, but you, you need, whether it's fixed wireless broadband or, or you need your Comcast cables or AT&amp;Ts, we've got a lot of spots in this county including Genoa Township where you can't get broadband.
That, that's, um, a little bit of a digress, but we're working. Covid relief funding is earmarked for, uh, broadband. I think Genoa is looking at.
Great use for it.
I'm totally, I'm totally okay with the cellular piece.
Yep. Okay. So that was that change. And then the most amount of change in here is as it relates to accessory buildings, accessory structures. Um, there's kind of a complete reformat. Because as I mentioned at the beginning, we had in permitted projections, things like flagpoles, sheds, fences. And I felt like it was awkward to have some of it in there and other parts of it elsewhere. Also, and I mentioned this, um, earlier when I was talking to Jill, the, the rabbit hole of how to, what an accessory structure is, gets really deep really quickly, right? It can be a rack for your kayak. It can be a flagpole. It can be your fire pit. Um, so really quickly I got into this and got really deep into trying to imagine any and all types of structures like your laundry drying rack that might go in your yard and wanting to make sure that the ordinance provided a fit for it. And if you all tell me I went too far, I'm totally okay with that because you know, regulating play structures is not something that we've ever done. It's a structure. It's attached to the ground. It's in your yard, but it's something I'm proposing that we, we put some standards in place to control. So, um, I guess just to get into this, it's reorganized in such a way that we now have kind of an, in general category. Um, the biggest change in here is allowing minor accessory structures like landscaping, flagpoles, play structures to go in without a permit. There are some standards, but you don't have to get a permit for them. Also, we've made a change to match the building department. So currently our ordinance says if it's under a hundred and twenty square, a hundred and twenty square feet, you don't need a permit. If you go to the county, they're going to tell you if it's under two hundred square feet, you don't need a permit and it's confusing. So I would like for us to be consistent. If the county doesn't require a permit for two hundred and under, I would also like to say that we don't require a permit for something two hundred and under. The other item I just want to address, it's a loophole that's been in our ordinance for the last twenty five years. And that's the concept of if it's attached to your home, it's considered to be part of your home. And lots of people and staff included have encouraged the concept of a breezeway to make that garage you want to build that's twenty five feet tall, comply with principal structure setbacks. Um, if you attach it, it's okay. Well, it's created a situation where we've got some really long breezeways where people are getting creative. Saying, okay, I'll put in a breezeway and then I can build it however tall I want. Um, so I'm just proposing that a breezeway connection would be twenty feet or less to be considered to be part of the home. Once you're more than twenty feet away from your house, it's no longer considered to be part of your house. Um, and then also adding in some language about the breezeway being similar architectural style with a similar roof. We had somebody come in a couple of weeks ago that wanted, um, they got approved for a breezeway and then they came in and said, well, we think a pergola would look better. We're going to put a pergola together like a plastic on top. We're going to call that a breezeway. And to me, that didn't need the intent. So just kind of clarifying that it's it's cohesive, it's structurally attached, it looks and it functions similar to the home. And then another catchall about screens, lattice, trellis, slats, beams, rafters, those all make something covered and enclosed. So then the next section would be accessory buildings. So this is a building as opposed to a structure. The main differentiation is a roof and it's roofed and enclosed. Um, in our current ordinance, we have a, we have a hole and that we don't, we allow them in a water, in a front yard in a waterfront district, but we don't provide a setback for it. Staff has enforced a ten foot, so I'm just proposing memorialize that. Um, if you're building an accessory building in the front yard on a waterfront lot, um, you need to be ten feet from your front lot line. And just putting in some clarification about when you can have one in a front yard. It's in the ag or the country estate district and requiring that, um, be seventy five, not less than seventy five feet, which is the front yard setback anyway. And again, you're going to see that increase to two hundred feet. And then, um, this last item here is right now, there's no reference to if you're a commercial building and you're building a detached accessory building. What are your setbacks? I don't think, you know, ten feet is appropriate in a commercial district. So, um, in practice, we have just said the, the general commercial setbacks are what would apply. Um, and that just kind of verifies that by adding that section. So moving on, the, this change here relates to, right now you need ten acres to be a conforming lot in agricultural. Um, so we're proposing to, to state, if you have five acres or more in agriculture estate, then you can, you don't have to meet size limits. The biggest change, and this is one, um, that we've heard loud and clear from our residents. And that's that the fourteen feet height max for a detached accessory building um, seems to be unreasonable to a lot of people. If you have a motorhome and we just talked about how we want people to put it inside, um, a fourteen feet max building height makes it very difficult to put in a tall enough garage door to put your RV or your boat inside. So we're proposing a change to allow those up to eighteen feet. Um, which will allow for somebody to park that accessory, that, uh, RV inside.
Mary Ann, that's still been an issue?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Mary Ann endorses.
Yeah, yeah. It, I mean, it just kind of makes sense, um, to do that. I mean, your, your house can be in Lakeshore Resort, but you know, your house can be twenty five feet. Your accessory building at eighteen is still, I think, very reasonable. So then moving down to decks, um, we are proposing, um, quite a bit of change to this section. Um, so the first part is just, um, you know, if it's covered or enclosed, it's part of the home. If it's uncovered, one of the changes here is that you can have it within all of your yard. So right now, I'll give myself as an example, the current ordinance says I have five acres. Um, my house sits kind of towards the front of my property. So I have a big backyard. Current ordinance would say my deck can only extend twenty five feet out the back of my house. Um, we don't, we feel like if you can put a house in your building, like you should be able to put your deck where you can put your house. So that's what we're proposing to do is get rid of this twenty five feet limit and say, if you can put your house there, you can put a deck there.
So you would be looking at, like, for instance, the, the, on lakefront again, on the lakeside. The setback, a lot of times from a variance standpoint, depends on what the other houses around you are setback. So, uh, if you're already pushed out in front of everybody else, the twenty five is probably going to stay because you can't go any further, because you would never be able to build your house, even the twenty five feet that you're talking about where your deck is now. I know we had this talk because I was talking about putting in some, some decking last year. And it, it just, it didn't make any sense what we were talking about.
Where you can put your house, you can put your deck. And then it gets into these next three, four bullet points, A, B, C, and D are, um, extensions. So where you can go inside your setback. So, um, into your front yard. And we do have some instances, particularly in some of the, um, lake areas where someone's home is, they have maybe a lake view. And sometimes that's out their front door. They want to put a deck out their front. Um, so you can extend twelve feet from your front building line as long as you're twenty feet from your front lot line. So this would allow someone, um, to build a deck out front. Twelve feet is the max, twenty, twenty feet at least from your front lot line. And then your side yard, so you can extend into your side yard setback up to four feet from any side lot line. And that's consistent with what our current ordinance allows. You can build a deck within four feet of your side lot line currently. Um, for your rear, you can go, um, and this is also consistent, ten feet from any rear lot line. So you can extend into your rear yard up to as close as ten feet to your rear lot line. To get to the waterfront yard, um, this would allow fifteen feet, which is what the current ordinance says. You can go fifteen feet. Except the current ordinance allows, um, if you're right on that setback line, you can go fifteen feet. If you built your home way far back from your neighbors, you also can only go fifteen feet. So it doesn't really feel fair that if somebody's home is setback further, they can go the same distance out that the guy can who's really close to the water. So, um, you can extend fifteen feet into your required setback, provided you can't be any closer than fifteen feet to the edge of the shoreline. Any questions about that before we move on? Because it's kind of complicated.
What, what about decks that don't have, uh, foundation? I see them all the time. People just, they'll build a deck and put it on block or they'll put it on, uh, cinder blocks or that, not cinder blocks, but slabs. Uh, put it down by the water, uh, put it wherever they want to in their yard and it's, it's a deck, but it's, it's not a deck because it's not affixed to the ground. I mean, what, what? Yeah. And essentially it's, it's portable if you want to think about it. Um, I, I, I guess I just, you know, I'm, I'm a devil's advocate in this case because I've seen it so many times. Um, you know, old dock turns into a waterfront deck.
So we did add a definition of deck, um, which is an unenclosed roofless platform structure with associated stairs and steps, either freestanding or attached to a building that has an elevation of six inches or greater from finished grade. Deck may be constructed of any materials. So that situation you described, that would be a deck. And I also think there's a section that's added here and I see a typo there. I need to get rid of my initials. Um, detached, freestanding, non-abutting decks, balconies, porches or similar structures shall comply with the requirements for accessory buildings. So in a situation where somebody wants to build a standalone deck, it would be treated like an accessory building.
No, we just covered the waterfront, but you said it went twelve feet or fifteen feet on the waterfront?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
When it's attached or abutting your home.
So, so currently there are many, many, many texts do not comply. You're way bigger than fifteen.
Yeah. If, if that is the case, then they do not comply. And this will be good because it'll mean we create some conformities instead of non-conformities. Um, so there's also gazebos and pergolas, um, when a buddy. So you can have a, a gazebo or a pergola on your deck. Hundred and fifty square feet is the max size, fifteen, fourteen feet tall. Um, that's in our current ordinance. This also says though, not within your principal required waterfront yard. So if you were going to add a gazebo. This also says though, not within your principal required waterfront yard. So if you were going to add a gazebo. To your deck and you're in your setback, you can't do it on the lake. That has the ability to block a view if you've got a second story deck that extends fifteen feet out into your required waterfront yard. So moving on to swimming pools, just some cleanup here. We actually don't have. Anything in our ordinance right now about a pool in your front yard. So we're putting it in there. You can't have a pool in your front yard. We also don't have anything about waterfront yard. So we're adding language regarding pools in a waterfront yard. They cannot be erected within your required shoreline setback. So basically, if you can't put a house there, you can't put a pool there. Which is kind of our guidance for a lot of these changes is to relax what you can build where you can build a house.
Kelly, just as, as an observation under. Accessory structures, eleven oh four oh three, we, we were just going over regarding waterfront yard, where you can have uncovered decks and such. Then you have to go down to where it talks about. Pools. And what you can't have in the waterfront. Should that be brought back up underneath that? So there's.
Want to look at them together?
Yeah, so that's clear underneath there and then put it again under pools. Right?
It's going to get real small, but.
Is there the pool, is a pool an accessory structure?
Yes.
Yeah, so. Under where D has waterfront yard, I'm almost thinking you should just repeat exactly regarding waterfront pools in the waterfront side. That, that should be consistent. So it's in there twice for everybody to see and understand. Regarding accessory structures and pools and waterfront.
So are you saying you want to allow pools?
No, I'm just referencing, well, because this actually talks about. Your required waterfront, because this is just. Maybe it just needs to be. As a separate bullet point. So that's D, maybe it needs to be E, and then continue under swimming pools separately. The swimming pools is a separate, is a separate. Sector, right?
I'm sorry, Mary Ann, I don't think I'm following what you want me to do.
Yeah, I guess it's hard to look at this as I'm scrolling through. So I see where you've got it outlined as accessory structures and you've got decks. And you're talking about waterfront and then it's just clarifying for everybody. So when we're talking about pools. In the waterfront, that it's, it's very. Very clear and concise as far as what that is considered. So I guess it's, it's, it's okay as a way I see it. I was just. No, it's fine.
Okay, well, I mean, that's, it's a good discussion there because right now you could, your deck can extend. Into your required waterfront yard fifteen feet, the way this is phrased and the way our current ordinance is today. If you wanted to build a deck, it can extend into your waterfront setback. The current ordinance does not allow the same for a pool and I'm proposing that that stays the same. But I know we did have a ZVA case that, that kind of went around and round on this particular issue. And now would be the time if there's. If there is support or interest in allowing pools, hot tubs, right? A lot of times people put a hot tub even on their deck. This would prohibit that within that waterfront yard. It's not often, yeah, we have somebody want to put a pool on a lakefront lot, but it has happened.
Well, and I, and I would agree that if you can comply with a required setbacks. That that would be, that would be consistent with the ordinance. I don't. But you have to, you have to be within the required waterfront setbacks.
That's what's proposed currently. The only exemption to that is going to be a deck. A deck can extend into your required waterfront yard. Retaining walls, which we'll get into later. There was another one, steps. So there's, there's a couple of things that could be built within your required waterfront setback. Pool is not proposed to be one of them. Okay, so moving on to fences, this is a big, this is a big change for us. And I know this is confusing to look at with all the markups and I apologize for that. The biggest thing for us right now is asking for that extra two feet. So our current ordinance. Limits a fence in the side or in the rear yard to four feet. And we would like to see the ability for fences in the community to go up to six. When you're in the side in the rear. Currently, you can do six on the sides. Ten feet behind the rear, but the rest of your property has to be four. And we probably get three a week, somebody that's. Buying a privacy fence, panels from Home Depot and they're coming in to get a permit and are absolutely floored. That they're not allowed to build a privacy fence. So we're asking for that extra two feet that would allow for a six-foot fence. As part of that, I will add, we've added in some language because I think there is some concern about a fence. Being in disrepair or, you know, a spite fence that they put the ugly side facing the neighbor that they don't like. So there is. Some new language in here about fences being constructed of high quality, rather resistant materials. The finished side has to be facing the outs, outside, and then it has to be maintained. And not, you know, no words, letters, images, it can't be used for graffiti. So we've, we've added that proposed language in as well to try and balance that extra two feet with maybe a little more protection.
Let me add something about it being at least one foot onto your property.
We can do that. You know, I always feel like Chris and I talked about this earlier. It's always really tricky. You know, because how do you get to that one foot on the other side without trespassing on your neighbor's property? Conversely, you know, then you, then you lead you to go, well, maybe three feet, then you could get your push mower. On the other side of the fence, but then there is, you know, this issue of, I forget the word, but the courts have used. Where like, if someone else maintains the property for long enough, it becomes theirs.
Head versus possession.
We've had that situation occur. On, in one of the lake areas where they built the fence a little bit off the property line. The guy next door cut the grass for forty years. And they went to court over it and the judge gave the neighbor that guy's property because. So.
And, and I think Chris and, and Mary Ann are familiar with an area on Backy Lake as well where. Literally everyone in the whole neighborhood is fighting over fences. And one of them was about, I'll then, you show me where the property line is and nobody wanted to pay for a survey. For exactly where the property line was. I just want to put it where the old fence is. So I hear your point, Jill, about a foot.
I don't think you'd be allowed to put a fence up without a survey.
Oh, yes.
You know, if they're trying to delineate their property, they need to know where their property is and they don't know that typically unless they survey it.
They don't do that.
We know there are neighbors who don't like their other, let their other neighbor on their yard. So that's why I worry about the cutting the foot.
But, but then how are they going to ever maintain it too? I mean.
Thing is, Jill, for every person that comes in and talks to Mary Ann and can't believe that you can't put the fence. You, 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 you are going to have people that won't even come in and just put it up. And then put it up wherever they think their lot lines are. And then they'll dispute that. So I think you're right. I mean. They should have a survey, but in reality, is, is someone going to pay for a survey in order to put a fence up? Or to move it one foot away from that?
Most people, you know, I don't know, I think that they should. It's not that expensive to get property corners marked. Especially on sides or rear yard. If you're in a condo or, you know, the only place that it would be expensive would be the waterfront because it's probably an old, old survey that was done. But you know, in these condo developments, it's hundreds of dollars only to do it, not thousands, so.
Yeah, my point is that people won't even know to do it. Half of the people won't come in because they don't think that putting up a privacy fence is something they need a permit or anything else for.
Yeah, I can tell you of two instances where people paid eight thousand dollars to contractors to put up fences, only to be told you're not allowed to have a fence that's eight foot high. And you didn't pull, and you paid somebody to pull a permit, but they never pulled the permit. And you're right, Jill, I, I get you need to know where your boundary lines are so that you know what your property is to put it on. But the majority of people don't even know that they have to do that. Pull a permit.
And if you're trying to get somebody to agree on a property line. I mean, you know, you could have it staked out and have, you know, have it. You know, have paint on the ground that shows where my lot line's at. And the guy that's lived next door for forty-five years is going to say, no, I've been cutting the grass at least four feet over towards your house from that. So the lot line isn't there. It's, it's over where, where I've been cutting to.
And you have two different surveys. You have two different surveyors who, who say the property is in two different places and then, yeah.
Then it's their legal battle, not our problem. At least they make sure they put it on what their survey showed was. Their property when the permit was pulled, that's all.
So I just made a note, maybe what I can do is do some research on how other communities handle if there's some language that exists out there for. On property line fences. You know, keep in mind, we're really only asking for an extra two feet height. We currently don't have any language in there that requires a survey or a setback. But my guess is there's probably some language in another community. That maybe would help, help a little bit towards at least putting something in the ordinance that requires.
Evidence?
Yeah, it's just something. So I'll do some research on that.
The vast majority of our community is not going to put up fences. Just, I mean, doesn't make any sense. You have beautiful views across other people's properties. Especially at lakefront or on acreage. And, you know, especially at lakefront, if you're going to put up a fence. We've run into this before, Kelly, you remember, there was a dispute down the, the way from me. They put up a six-foot fence because it said they could put up a six-foot fence. But then in reality, they could only put up a four-foot fence because they got past the front edge of a lakefront home and the view was obstructed. So. You know, there, there's, there's a lot of stuff to consider and I think. You know, going to six feet and letting people fight over their boundaries, I guess is as good as any of it.
I kind of agree with Jill. If you're going to put up a, a fence and we require a building permit to do it, land use permit. I think we ought to. If not demand a survey. Put in big capital letters, it is strongly recommended that you get a survey.
Okay.
A state survey.
Yeah.
Not a mortgage survey because that's what comes in all the time.
Okay, so moving on, waterfront accessory structures is the next section. There's just some cleanup. In this language, getting rid of the word appurtenances, we got kind of hammered on. What's an appurtenance? This was the rabbit hole of is it the flagpole? Is it my fire pit? What's an appurtenance to a structure? So. Getting rid of that word, so I don't have to try and explain it anymore when I don't understand it myself. And then just referencing back some of the other language. The permitted architectural projections that we talked about, like chimneys, fireplace, bay windows. An accessory building, accessory structures, a dock and mooring apparatus, which is currently allowed. You can see it up here, just moved down here. And then the only other change right here would be, you're allowed one dock per lot. Or dwelling unit. We wanted to indicate that it has to be occupied with the principal permitted use, meaning if you've got a vacant home there. That no one's living in, there shouldn't be a dock in the water. And then moving down, so these are some of the new categories that we added. Trying to do that catchall that I mentioned. So gardens and landscaping you can have in all yards and there's. Lovely new definitions in the definition section that define that. Manufactured landscape features and minor structures. So this is also. New, and this is going to be. Little stuff like your bird feeder or your fire pit, so kind of small. Small items that people put in their yards, maybe decorative. Probably would be better if I go to that definition. As we do this. Sorry for the bumping around. So statues, lawn ornaments, bird feeders, water fountains, lawn art, benches, arvers, trellises. Including objects created from soap. Somebody turns a tree stump into a bear sculpture. That's really what we're looking to get at with. With that item.
What, Kelly, what were you thinking about in terms of no landscape feature? Or minor structure shall exceed twelve feet in height? Like what would you think would be allowable that's twelve feet high?
I don't know. Well, maybe there's a good example. On one of the crooked lakes, someone built. It's, it's an art feature. It's like a huge. Maybe somebody that lives on the lake can describe it. It's like a person or a monster. I don't really know.
It's huge. It's built into the hill.
Yeah, it's like a skull, it's a big sculpture. Um, so I guess something like that is a possibility that someone could build.
You have a couple of people, my in-laws included, who have a tree, ash tree that died. And literally had someone come in and make it a totem pole. So you've got eagles that are over on the, on the, over the water. You've also got the tickment firefighter thing, so.
Okay.
So these types of kind of unique structures. If they're over three feet in any dimension, they can't be closer than three feet to a lot line or five feet from a shoreline. Again, that twelve feet in height. And then it can't be located in such a way that would obstruct vision of drivers or impede traffic, so. That's that one. Another fun new category that Brian got a kick out of when him and I went through this is the idea of a gulp. Which is a ground level. Unenclosed projection. So this is basically stuff that's six inches or less above grade. So patios, terraces. Walkways, landing steps, anything that's low to the ground, but still a structure and is attached to the ground. Is included in this section called gulps. And basically, they should be three feet from lot lines on a riparian or waterfront lot. Fifteen feet of open space should be maintained on between the shoreline and the club. Although there is a provision to allow one gulp, hundred square feet or less. Maximum ten feet along the shoreline. That's in our current ordinance, by the way. It's in our deck section. You can have like a little standalone deck down by the water if you want. It's included now in this new section called clubs. And Eric, I see you've got your hand up.
Yeah. Probably minor here, but wouldn't that include sidewalks? So, you know, three feet off of property line, if property line extends to, in some instances, the center line of a road. Just a thought there that some cross connections might need to be accommodated in this.
Yeah, I think maybe we could exclude sidewalks located within the public right of way, public sidewalks with them right of way.
You know, I have to go back to that twelve foot height. That just seems like it should be tied to the height of the structure and be. You know, I have to go back to that twelve-foot height, that just seems like it should be tied to the height of the structure and be, um. I don't know, twelve feet seems pretty high to me. For a landscape feature, I think it should maybe be tied to the height of the building. So that we aren't getting these things, I mean, like, what it sounds like some people have done are attractive things, but. God only knows what somebody else might do, and if it's. I don't know how tall a mobile home is or how tall a, this, uh, ranch is, but if the thing is bigger than a ranch, that would be. Unsightly, don't you think? I don't know, somebody else going on that, it just kinda cr- cut my eye too. That height seems pretty high.
Ranch home would be about twelve feet to the gutter. And then to the top of the hip, it would, you know, be another, depending on the size of the roof, but it'd be like sixteen to eighteen feet.
So one to twelve-foot structure of landscape art be a little bit much for a ranch home? I think it kinda should be tied to the height of the building, like half the height of the building. Something like that, kind of.
Kinda depends on how close to the house it is, really, too, you know? What, you know, if it feels imbalanced or not.
I mean, I don't wanna write an ordinance because we know we have a couple that are out there that we're trying to accommodate. I think I'd rather let those be, um, grandfathered and write an ordinance that's gonna tighten it up a bit.
So your concern is with, with it being taller than the structure?
Yeah, I think it should, uh, you know, just, I don't know, visually, I'm trying to imagine what twelve-foot landscape feature I've ever seen. And I can't say that I've seen any.
Well, my favorite one, the reason I brought it up is an obelisk. I had somebody who put an obelisk in their front yard. And it was pretty, it was pretty ugly.
I don't think we'd wanna continue that.
Right, and it's twelve, and it's, and it was around twelve feet, that's the reason, it was a condo. You know, lucky, luckily for us, you couldn't have them, so we didn't need to rely on ordinance, but that's what made me think of it, was, you know.
But I do think, I, to your point, um, Jill, regards to height, I do think that there are a lot of people, and I think Jeff mentioned this. That when a tree starts to die, they just utilize it and they have somebody carve it, so. Um, it's, it's a, a natural feature, so to speak, and you're keeping the, the tree as a. Um, as a landscape feature, but, um, certainly, I don't think a carver would be carving twenty feet high. For a, for a, a totem or whatever the case it would be. Three of them over on, on Shimong on the west side. I think there's a couple of them over there, right?
No, there's some on Hughes Road, you can see from Hughes Road, there's, there's some people have their addresses being carved into a tree.
Yes, there's one at ten forty-six South Hughes Road, and there's one just off a pathway is where the eagle is at.
Yeah.
But it's on the waterfront.
Right.
I think the eagle's gone. Yeah. Real nice throwing your in-laws under the bus there, Jeff.
Hey, a firefighter and a veteran, go, 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 try and take his totem pole down.
How tall are they? Do you know?
Oh, they're, oh, they're really short. If I was guessing, I'd say it's about twelve feet.
Okay.
How close to his house is it?
At the road.
It was, it was an a- it was a three-foot across ash tree that was like eighteen inches from the road.
So do we want to reduce that height or puts, leave it as is? Man, I think it's rare that we're gonna have an issue with it, but.
I think we'll have more issues if we allow that height, you know, I almost don't want you to specify a height that high. Just because it might create more issues, like, I don't think people are gonna come, if something is done and it's beautiful, people aren't gonna come and complain, no matter how high it is. If something is gaudy, when we say, oh, it's okay, it's twelve feet, you're, you're good, that, we're gonna have some problems, I think.
Does anyone know, I know purple marten, um, which are like those white birdhouses that, that people. Get because they eat a lot of mosquitoes, and I know those have to be elevated and lower, does anyone know the height of a purple marten birdhouse?
I don't, I don't know the height, but I can visualize three of them and they are way over twelve feet.
They are.
Way over.
The one, the one on number eleven on Shimong Hills is about twenty-five feet.
Yeah, the average, the average, the average for a purple marten house is between twelve and twenty-five, or twelve and twenty feet. That's the recommended height to try and attract them. And it just depends on its placement.
I don't think Jill's thrilled to hear that it's twenty-five feet now.
Uh, twenty, I just said average, the average.
So we could do, you know, that, um, height equal to setback, I mean, we talked about that a little bit with cell towers, I don't know if that. If that would alleviate concern, but, um, you know, structures over. Eight feet would need to be set back at least equal to their height, so at least you're pushing something taller. Away from property lines.
I think that would be, something like that would be beneficial.
Okay.
I like Jill's idea, though, in, in relationship to the house size, too, I mean, uh. An estate-sized home can get away with a piece of art that's twelve feet tall, but, uh, uh, a bungalow, a small bungalow. You know, ran, you know, on, on a lake, probably can't pull it off. You know, so, and, and, and can make things look a lot, lot trashier faster, but I have to temper my voice here. Because I manage condo associations and I run by bylaws all day long, so I gotta be careful, I gotta just be careful. Cause that my natural inclination is to, is to police.
Yeah, so I can take a look at that section and come back with some revised language that maybe puts a little more protection in there.
I'll at least take a measurement of how tall it is over at my in-laws, for perspective.
Good.
Take a picture too, now I wanna see it.
Okay.
Okay, so the next one is steps, stairways and stoops. Um, so right now, steps and stoops are written into permitted projections and they can encroach into. Um, the required yard by kind of a nominal amount, three to five feet. Um, so this keeps some of that integrity, but it also builds some more language in. Um, so not closer than three feet to any property line. Um, a landing area which can't exceed twenty square feet. And then allowing, again, so this is within your setbacks, within your required yard, which is the setback. Um, a steps, stairways and stoops can encroach ten feet into the front. Fifteen into your rear, fifteen into your waterfront. And then two feet into a side yard, less than ten feet, five feet into a side yard, um, otherwise. Um, there's also a provision in here, because I think a lot of people that live on this, the lakes, recognize that there are some lots. That you need to have stairs to get down to your water, not everything is a nice flush, gentle slope down to the lake. Um, so I'm also proposing to put some language in here that would allow a staircase or steps. Um, to exte- to extend towards the water, um, although putting some limits on how wide it can be, so four feet wide. Um, with a fourteen-inch depth in the tread, so that it's, it's merely a staircase. Um, and then allowing it, um, to extend to the shoreline. Where it's required by topography as confirmed by the zoning administrator, which most likely would look like. Um, us involving the township engineer and verifying like, hey, these folks wanna put steps all the way down to the water. We're gonna get an engineering opinion to make sure that that's indeed necessary and that there isn't another way to do it.
So Kelly, in looking at all of this and, um, reflecting back in the number of requests for variances. Especially on lakefront houses, are we gonna be requiring in their, um. Approval packet, a landscape plan that shows what they're projecting to do?
It's a good question, I don't think we require a landscape plan right now, but they would be required to show all structures as the way it's currently phrased. So any decks or steps or staircase or, you know, fire pits, flagpoles, anything right now would technically be required to be shown on a plan.
So I just think of all the number of people that come in and they're asking to put an addition on. And this addition typically requires moving out into an area where there's a grade drop. So you give them permission to do their, to, to grant, you grant them the variances and then. How do you, how do you follow up with their landscape plan after the fact? To make sure they're in compliance with what we're putting forward.
Yeah, I think that's a, a matter of staff, just being a little more cognizant of where we're dealing with, you know, what the situation is. We've gotten better with aerial photos, you know, it used to be when you got a piece of paper, the lot looked. Flat and square and you issued it and didn't realize that there was a massive hill or, you know, that there was a whatland. So I know we've gotten better at checking aerial images before we issue permits. Um, I think same thing goes here, if there's a, a door that goes out the back. And it looks like the lot drops off, we're gonna wanna see some type of topo, or if they need a staircase, they're gonna have to add that.
So will that be an ad- after the fact, um, for, you know, for coming in for approval for, for variances, for, for building purposes? Or?
So it would just be, um, probably better enforcement of the warrants for the land use permit. Which we have a checklist that shows what is supposed to be on those drawings. We don't always get everything that it's, says we need, though.
Ellie, would this include, uh, handicap ramps as well within here, or do they, they not fall under this?
I wouldn't envision that to be included, um.
The reason I ask is some of the details in here don't meet ADA requirements, and so, um, I don't know if there's any need then to. Offer, um, clarification on that. So, yeah, just a thought, and then if that were to become a case, I'm thinking here, not so much of. We've been talking a lot about lakefront properties, but I'm thinking here in regards to commercial properties. That have handicap accessibility requirements. Uh, and sometimes if you think about an existing building, where the property line is, it's very, very difficult to. Get in the required, uh, ramp lengths and landings and everything. Things get real tight, real fast and, and trying to fit those in and squeeze those in at times, so. Just kind of a general comment there, when we think about these, in, uh. Commercial real estate, sometimes fitting all these elements in can be a difficult task and, and encumbering that even more. Might be difficult if, uh, especially meeting ADA requirements, so.
So would these projections help, do you think, in that situation, if say an ADA ramp was included in to this category somehow? That would allow an encroachment into the, into the yard?
Yeah, I think an ADA ramp would need an incre- like that, I'm thinking about that three feet. Um, you know, my past experience, I did a lot of like, that commercial properties and stuff, and there's. Many instances where ADA ramps are well within that three feet of property, you, you're, you're using every square inch to meet requirements for ADA ramps, so. Um, just a thought.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll look into that and think through it, too, because I can see, you know, unfortunately, I'm always looking for that loophole, right? That guy that's like, oh, I'm not building a deck, I'm building an ADA ramp, um. So I'll look into that, um, just to make sure that we're, we're clear on what we allow and don't allow.
And is stoop defined somewhere under our definitions?
Let me check. Feel like I added in a bunch of definitions, but I don't know if that one made it. I did not add that, but I can. So I'll add stoop. I know that I researched it, it was a fun thing to research, the history of stoops. Um, so kind of in the, in the big cities, the stoops were created because the, um. Like the peasants entered into the side, and so the stoop was created for the homeowner. And then the servants and others had to use kind of a back door, it was really interesting to look at the history of how stoops were created. Okay, so. Flagpoles, um, if we're good to move past this section, um, permitted in all yards, provided. That they are setback a distance at least equal to their height, maybe Jill, we can use some of this language for our. Um, our manufactured landscape features. The next one is retaining walls, so this has been a big problem with our ordinance lately as it relates to. The lake lots mostly, but, but also elsewhere. The current ordinance basically does fences, walls and screens altogether. So retaining wall is considered a fence or a wall. And it's fairly limiting if you apply the fence section to a retaining wall, so. We're proposing to create a new category just for retaining walls. Um, and put some, some requirements in here where you would use it, so when a slope exceeds twelve percent. Um, then you're allowed to have retaining walls, you have to show that you have that twelve percent slope in order to get it. Um, that it can't disrupt natural drainage patterns, um, can't alter the overall natural topography of the land. So it can't be used to kind of falsely create something. Um, and then there's a correction here, Brian and I talked earlier, there's a couple things that will be changed in here before you see it again. Um, this was meant to be height, so retaining well shall comply with the following, this should say maximum height requirements. Um, so within your front yard, um, within your setback, not allowed at all, outside of your setback, a height of three feet. In your side yard, um, in. In the setback area, you can have a six-foot tall retaining wall, again, keep in mind, this is only where grade absolutely requires it. Um, within your, outside of your setback permitted, this gets back to our thought process of like, if you can put a house there, why can't you build a wall there? Um, so rear yard, it can be, um, six feet tall, inside your setback, outside the setback, there's no limit. And then within your waterfront yard, which is, um, you know, within your, within the required waterfront setback. Um. Permitted, let me get this straight, six feet is the height. In the required yard, so that's in your setback, you can do six feet. Um, once you're outside of your setback, it's allowed. There's some limits on length, can't exceed thirty percent of the lot line length, except in the waterfront yard is provided below. Um, fifteen feet is the closest you can get to a shore. And then there's some language about if you wanna go taller than six feet, it has to be stepped. So two or more parallel walls, each measuring three feet in height. Um, are there, I see some hands up, I'm gonna stop now and take the questions before I keep going and lose it. So, I don't know who was first, Chris?
Eric, go ahead.
All right, I have a philosophical concern with this whole section. Um. Up top, we talk about, um, retaining walls may be, was, were needed to stabilize steep slopes. But then we go on and communicate a bunch of restrictions on how to do that. Uh, and Jill, you could probably attest to this, but this is a diff- like, to me, these are, there are several areas where. I think we're, we're creating a real hardship here for civil engineers, um, this. This can get really difficult, including the six-foot height, um, and so. Uh, just take, kind of taking a step back here, um, the land's the land, the topography's there, it's been there for a long time. And, uh, if someone's building a structure inside the building envelope and then to, you know. Within the setbacks and all, need to create retaining walls to accommodate for that, even like the thirty percent link thing and stuff like. It's, it's really the topo- the topography, which defines the story of how tall, how long. Uh, that a retaining wall is constructed to. And adding these limitations, I think is gonna cause a lot of heartache for our, for you all as, as staff. Uh, I think it ca- causes a lot of limitations and difficulties in site engineering. Um, and, uh.
Eric?
Just philosophically, I kind of like, feel like we're actually adding way too many restrictions on here. Um, it's the land that kind of determines these things. Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, would, would it make any sense to basically say, whatever you're going to do. Should hit, should be stamped by a civil engineer who's gonna design. Should hit, should be stamped by a civil engineer who's gonna design the, the, the flow. I mean, that, in that way, you know, you could. Eliminate all these restrictions because you're.
In size has to be anyway, so basically anything.
Right.
Must be engineered, so that's gonna get stamped anyways. And then. You know, even the water flow stuff, you know, it's technically illegal. By law to change significant water course. Action, technically a trespass to change that, so. I don't know, I just, I just kind of like, when I saw this, um, I just kind of thought this is. Pretty restrictive and I, I just wonder how, how much heartache we're gonna create here for everyone.
No, I appreciate that. And this was a, a cut and paste of a lot of different community retaining wall sections, just trying to come up with something. Um, and I'm, I'm all ears if there's a better way.
Go ahead, Joe.
And I would say Kelly, so for, is this, is this also?
Or Joe?
The ordinance person having challenges?
Yeah, yeah, and Mary Ann would tell you, the zoning board of appeals is hearing variance request after variance requests as it relates to retaining walls. They had one at their last meeting that, um, well, a lot of them are water lots, but not necessarily.
And that's because retaining walls and fences are being treated the same today?
Yes.
Okay.
What about seawalls? I'm sorry, go ahead, Joe.
Okay, so, um, first I see, you know, you say which exceeds twelve percent. Twelve percent's actually pretty, pretty, um, flat. So typically when we would use retaining wall in the engineering world is when it exceeds thirty-three percent, a one on three slope. So I would change that right away because at twelve percent, you can grade it out and should and not use a wall. So retaining walls typically come into play when it exceeds a, a slope that can't be established with grass easily. Or mowed. Um, and you know, one on four, which is twenty-five percent, you can mow that. One on three gets a little bit harder. It's usually pegged in, you know, pegged seed and mulch blanket into the grade to establish it. Um, so those would be two things I would say on that. Twelve is flat and you don't need a retaining wall. The six foot height is too high or it not to be structurally engineered. And, um, I would limit that down to four and over four, you would then do this, you know, tiered walls. Drainage is a big thing. You, you cannot put a retaining wall on the property line like you do a fence. Because typically, two feet on each side of the property line is supposed to be for drainage of the lots towards the road or towards the rear of the lot. Regardless, or you know, wherever the storm drainage is going, so that's something that has to be considered too. But then after stating that you can use them and they have to be engineered after four feet and you can only use them when you. Can't grade it in at a one on four or one on three slope. I think then, you know, you, and then identify, you know, not to block drainage with them. I think that's pretty good then. And then let the engineer figure it out from there.
You know, Kelly, one other thing too is you're aware, uh, for every new structure, whether that's a house or a commercial building, they have to receive a permit from the drain office for several. And sedimentation control. And, uh, those standards, uh, have to be met, which includes some of these things too, the maximum slope on properties and all too. So, you know, we could be creating some things here that might be in juxtaposition to the drain code as well if we're not careful.
Okay, that's a good thought. So I think I'm gonna have the township engineer maybe take a look at this section and give me some input. And the drain commissioner's office. And then Eric and Jill, if you're open to it, maybe I could make some changes and run it past.
Sure.
Run it past you guys. You have a, a wealth of expertise that I don't possess, that I think would be really helpful and kind of fine tuning this section in a way that makes it.
Sure. And then the other thing I had mentioned earlier, just checking with Leominster County Building Department to see what they require. You know, I believe they're probably gonna say anything over four feet will be engineered as well.
Okay.
Ellie, what are seawalls, uh, considered?
So seawalls are exempted from this section. And in general, seawalls are regulated by the Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, which used to be the DEQ, which used to be the DNR. General, we, we don't get involved in seawalls because the state handles that. And I believe in the definition, when we get there, I think there's a reference that seawalls are not considered to be retaining walls. So I'm gonna move past that section because it sounds like it's gonna change quite a bit before, before you folks see it again. The last one is play structures. Um, believe it or not, we had an issue where somebody built a play structure out of some pretty. Shoddy material in their front yard and. People were complaining that neighborhood kids were going to play on it and it was a nuisance. So as much as I hate to put something in the ordinance to regulate them. I ended up throwing everything in to see what it would look like. So allowing play structures in your side, your rear and your waterfront yards. Not the front yard, ten feet to property line, not closer than fifteen feet to the water. Um, and then that, that twelve foot height repeats itself again here, not exceeding a height of twelve feet. And the safety rail may exceed the maximum height by no more than three feet. I don't know if anyone has any strong opinions about regulating play structures.
Do, do we have a definition for play structure then too?
We do.
So you ca, it's not like a hanging swing or anything or swings that are from?
And probably would be included. Sorry. So play structure is a structure generally constructed of chiefly wood, metal or, and or vinyl. Designed for children to play on, may consist by way of examples, swings, climbers. Climbing structures, slides, ladders, platforms, climbing walls, monkey bars. Spiral climbers, treehouses, trampoline, sandbox or combinations thereof.
So you could, you could have a, like a swing on a tree that would be considered a play structure?
Yes.
I don't think it would. A structure is something typically that is fixed on the ground, not something that can be removed.
A place structure may consist of by way of examples, swings.
Yeah, I, I guess I would go back.
Permanent, not permanent, right?
Right. I would say something that is more fixed to the ground, not. Hanging, that's, you know, that's my, when I think of a structure, it's a fixed object to the ground that can't be easily moved, usually has a foundation or is anchored in some way.
That's true. Definition of structure, anything constructed or erected, the use of which requires location on the ground. Or attachment to something having location on the ground. And landscaping is excluded. A tree would be landscaping, so I guess I would probably agree with Jill that. A swing on a tree would not be considered a play structure. Now, if you, if they built like a tree fort on the tree with the swing set and some other things, then.
I know, I'm thinking of several people who have like a double swing that hangs from a tree, right? So I mean, I just wanna make sure if, if you're reading in terms of the context of what we're talking about it.
So I just wanna make sure I'm clear. Under this definition, someone couldn't erect a treehouse. More than twelve feet tall and as to the tallest part of that treehouse.
Correct.
That included deer blind?
Yeah. Does that include that? Does that include some sort of outlook or outpost or something like that? And then, yeah.
So again, I think we have to look at what the definition of the structure is and it's attached to the ground. So I think you might be able to get away with the tree blind. In those situations and maybe even.
Mentioned in the definition. And so. You know. I don't know, that, I think that kind of gets a little iffy in this instance. And then, how close could we put a shed? Remind me of that, because ten feet.
It's four feet.
Four feet. So a play structure has to be ten feet away from a property line, but a shed can be four feet from a property line.
Correct.
I would suggest those are similar. And that they should.
I like the ten foot.
For a shed?
No, for play structure. I just think that we have a lot of small lots in our community. And, um. I don't know, or, or, or do, do. Do our zoning officials wanna take away a kid's swing set? I'm just.
Like I said, the, the one that was built, it was in a tree in a front yard. It was very unsafe. Um, now that we got the building department involved as well, um, in that particular situation. But, um, that was kind of what prompted. Including this was because some homemade play structure. Maybe unsightly, might be something the neighbors would not wanna see really close to the property line or over a certain height.
Yeah, I don't think anyone wants it in a front yard ever.
Yeah, and I like that restriction that's in here, not a front yard. I would, I would put it four feet and match the, the shed thing to my personal. Because I think properties do get kind of tight. And then, and most of these aren't, structures are usually a swing set, you know, things. And then, the height, I would, I, I honestly would, would probably even go a little bit higher. Yeah, and personally, I'll be out of conformance after this, so.
And I was gonna say, when I built my play structure, I used sixteen foot four by fours going up because I wanted the big swing.
Yeah, I, I, we don't need to put a limit on play structure height if, uh, if.
I don't think so either. I think the landscape, it's not a landscape feature, it's a play structure. They're different things.
I had a hard time putting regulations in at all for play structures. It just doesn't seem like something government should really have a say in.
Well, did, did, was it enforced by the, who, who did you call the, the fire department or the health department?
The, the building department helped a little bit that they didn't have permits. And it was, wasn't like a structure that you would go by. It was somebody that found some leftover lumber and was just. Constructing something that he thought kids would wanna play in. It was, it was bad.
Well, my brother-in-law has a play structure, a swing set, and it's as tall as his house. So. Might be something you might wanna think about. I don't know, I just, it's big, because you can really swing high on it.
Question. Kelly, this applies to commercial properties again too, not just residential. So, is our own township gonna be out of compliance at all?
It's a good question. Um, we do have a, a front yard this way.
Yeah.
Towards the highway. I think that would be considered a front yard. I'd have to look at it, but potentially.
Uh, I would, Kelly, if I could jump in, I, I would, I mean, I would treat these differently. Maybe we need to say something, but. I mean, th- this is not intended for parks, playgrounds, public areas. This is purely intended for private residential properties, so maybe we just need to clarify that.
Yeah, so let me ask this then, Brian. Wh- where does daycare land in this?
That would not, I mean, if it's in, in-home daycare as a private residence, then it would apply. If it's a commercial, you know, nursery school, I would suggest that it, it's, that's not what it's intended for.
Right, so just clarification.
Yeah, no, for sure. Well, and this is one of the difficulties and I've sort of forewarned Kelly many moons ago about trying to regulate play structures. Because it's very difficult to do. And some communities wanna try and do it and some communities like to just sit back and let whatever happens happen. And if you get an unsafe one, you call in, you know, your, your building enforcement and you say, hey, guys, this is a, a dangerous situation. Get it out of here. But as far as popping up a, a, you know, a teeter totter in your backyard. Or a, you know, a, a four post swing set with two swings on it for your kids in your backyard. This is, this is the fine line of diving into regulating those.
We're not requiring a permit for this though, are we? We're just telling them where to locate it.
Correct. Minor accessory structures, gardens, landscaping, flagpoles and play structures do not need permits. So most likely this section would only get pulled out, you know, if someone calls and asks, which never happens. And that, you know, then if a neighbor is upset about the neighbor's kids playing too close to their property line. Or the unsafe situation. So I'm, I'm happy to just, you know, take this section out. If we have a problem, we can always treat it as an accessory structure and go down that, that route.
Pers- personally, Kelly, I feel like the front yard thing's a necessity.
Okay.
So somehow, I personally, I, I feel like we need to enable it. And empower the township to be able to regulate the front yard.
Okay.
I agree. I would leave it in.
So I'm hearing, um, keep it, reduce the setback to four feet to be consistent with where you can build a shed. Um, it seemed like maybe everyone was comfortable keeping it, you know. Farther away from the water, so it can go into your waterfront yard fifteen feet if you have one. Um, and then maybe just eliminating the height requirement altogether.
Yep.
Okay. All right, thank you. So moving on, this was just a typo, um, which I will correct. Outdoor furnace, just requiring a permit for those. We feel pretty strongly, like if we regulate it, we should ask for a permit for it. There's quite a bit of standards as it relates to an outdoor furnace. Why we didn't require a permit, I'm not sure, but we wanna add that in. And then I think the next thing is just an entirely new section about solar energy. This has become something we're seeing more of. So we're adding language, um, about solar energy collectors, either residential or commercial. You know, trying to limit. Where, where they can be, how tall they can be. Things of that nature. I'm not sure how much you guys got into this, if you want me to go through it or. If, when this comes back next time with some changes, if you folks wanna dig into it then, I guess, Mr. Chair, let me know if you want me to. Go through this or we're good for tonight.
I don't know, how does the group feel?
I think we're good for tonight. I don't know enough about these right now. I think what you've written with the planner, I think will probably be sufficient. And tell me if you're seeing problems with it.
Have we had a lot of inquiries for it, Kelly?
You know, I'd say we'd maybe issued about a dozen permits, so we are seeing them. Most of them are going on people's homes, so they're adding them to their roofs. And we haven't done a whole lot of like the ground mounted solar arrays. And a, all the permits that we've issued, we've kind of checked this language and it, it would fit with what we're seeing.
The, uh, brown, brown bag luncheons, I go to those quarterly luncheons. A year ago or so, they had an attorney and talking about solar collector farms. And I don't know if it belongs in the ordinance or not, but he warned you to make sure. That in your application fees, you cover the. Local engineering expense, because it's gonna be large, just the engineering review of them is exceptionally difficult. And you wanna have some provision bonding that when their useful life is over, they get removed. Really cautioned about that. Anyway, I don't know if that belongs in the ordinance or not. Did they give any indication of what kind of lifespan? Is it technology that ends the lifespan or do they wear out or? I don't know, they, um. The guy that approached the township, he wanted to rent some township property. I think he wanted a thirty-year lease, but I don't know if that meant his. Solar panels lasted thirty years or what it meant, but.
So, so, so today.
Question, I guess.
Today, most of, most of the like wind energy and solar energy that's getting, that gets generated. We only use like thirty percent of it. The, the, the utility companies don't have the storage capacity to actually store the energy that those things are doing. You're seeing companies like even mine. Volkswagen is getting into the energy business as well, because remember, the internal combustion engine dies. It stops being made in eight and a half years. So, you got any charging stations? Your houses are gonna be filled with charg- So you got any charging stations? Your houses are going to be filled with charging stations. And that, that extra capacity is going to be at your house too. So as much as we're working on solar, we still got to deal with charging stations. They're going to be all over the place. Including your house.
Will they be solar powered?
Could be.
Okay, those are good comments. I can include some of that.
I, I know we say we're gonna be there in eight and a half years. I would like to bet. I'd like to make an eight and a half year bet on that one.
Oh no, I'm just saying we will stop making them. You'll still, it will be like Cuba. We'll still have a whole bunch of internal combustion engines. No one's gonna make any new ones.
Wait, you see, when you see people want them. That happens, we'll make them, believe me.
How am I gonna get to my cottage? We're up to the U P.
You could have stopped once.
For three hours to recharge?
No, you like, you get like 80% in 30 minutes.
What am I gonna do for a half hour at a gas station?
You aren't gonna go to gas station. You're gonna go someplace that is a commercial place that you could stop and shop, eat food. That's just me speculating. I have no idea.
And that there's something to do, otherwise I'm gonna be an angry trampler.
Strap a battery pack to your roof.
Yeah.
Kelly.
Yes.
Under the ground mounted solar energy collectors subsection D spacing 15 feet. What's, what is that? Like every panel has to be 15 feet apart or?
Correct. So each.
What's the heart of regulating that? Like, or you know, like I'm thinking of like the one at the 23 and 14 interchange, like those can't be 15 feet apart. They're like a solar farm is gonna try to pack in as many as they can on their footprint. Is that okay?
So this wouldn't be like a, this would be for residential. These ground mounted, this section is for residential. And I can do some more work into this. I'll admit that this came from a consultant that we used. Gosh, probably two years ago now. Some of you may remember Dave Jurassic was helping with the ordinance. He wrote this section. So I can do a little bit more digging into what the spacing is and why that's required. So any other questions, Maria? It looks like your hand's up.
It was up, sorry, before I had to pull it down, sir.
Any other questions? Do we want to, want to continue with what we're working on with the solar or we're gonna give it up tonight?
Give it up.
I, I think we've gotten through most of it and I, I mentioned in my memo that this has been a really difficult, even though it may not work like much work on your end. There's, there's been a lot that went into this. And so I was just anxious to kind of get it before you get some feedback and kind of start the ball rolling. So I have enough, I think, to go back, make some changes and clarifications and then bring it back to you.
We're gonna table things tonight, Kelly, that we've been talking about.
Yeah, we'll need to have the call to the public. My preference would be for requests to postpone. And then I can make some changes and bring it back.
Do you say we need to have a call to the public right now?
We do.
Okay. So we'll make a call to the public. If there's anyone interested in providing feedback for any of the zoning articles for 11 or 25 that we've discussed this evening, now would be the time.
I have no one.
Seeing none. Well, close the call to the public. Let's see here. And we just talked about that. We really don't have any more questions or comments for tonight. So we'll go past that. And we're going, are we gonna move to table it then for another? Okay. So then I'll look for a motion to table this item or these items.
Move a table, move to table.
Second record.
Can we just real quick for discussion postpone it to the next meeting in June? So that would be June 14th. Can we put it on that agenda, please?
Want to put it in a second?
No, I'd prefer to put it on June 14th.
Be with a maker.
Yeah. How about whenever you're ready to bring it back to us, Kelly?
I don't have to do publication again if we specify the meeting date.
Oh, okay.
Publicly, we've had the public hearing. So not that we won't take a public comment, but it saves me publication costs if we're purposeful in our, in our motion and minute tracking that it's going to be on that agenda.
Okay. So we modify the motion to table the pub, the open public hearing number two, the review of the zoning ordinance text amendments to Article 11 and 25 until June 14th meeting.
Thank you.
That sounds great.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Move on to administrative business. Do you have anything, Kelly? Staff report?
I, we do have obviously the June second meeting and then June 14th as well. We have a the Howell family dentist, I don't remember. He built that new dentist building across from Bob Maxey Ford that's close to Grand River. It's beautiful. He wants to tear down his old building that's located to the west and use it for parking. So that'll be on June 14th. And then the second one is the Chestnut Landings Project, which is the Steve Grono Office Buildings near Bordine's Nursery. He wants to create a site condominium for his project. So that site condominium request will also be on June 14th.
Is that an extension of what's already here?
No, it was not approved as a condo. So this is really just creating condo documents.
For the, for the office use that he's got there?
Yeah, there's two.
You say condos for offices. But there, it's probably going to be buildings and they'll just be attached.
Correct. So the buildings would, will be the condo units and the, the property around it will be the general common element.
Okay. Anything else? Remember discussion, anybody have anything that they want to throw out there? Okay. Did I look for a movement?
No, sorry, minutes? Motion for the minutes?
I don't have it on my, my sheet, so I.
Sorry, I keep forgetting that every week.
That motion to approve the minutes has submitted.
Ooh, second.
I should, no.
All those in favor?
No, discussion. Discussion.
Discussion.
Go to computer page 89. The third paragraph. I'm finding the sentence just a minute.
Would not cause a drain versus strain. The third line.
No, there's a, just a minute.
No, okay.
I'm having trouble finding my a minute. Bear with me for a minute.
Was it in your motion, Jim?
Yeah, but I, I'm having trouble finding the sentence about it. There's something that said. Bear with me a minute. I don't know why I'm having so much trouble. Oh, in the third paragraph. Commissioner Mortensen stated the property owner has rights. It is irrelevant how and where he got the property or all only is, he has owned it. It's a church is a special use. Not in every zoning, every residential zoning district.
There you go.
Got to add the word residential. Okay.
Got it.
Okay, it's important that we get these. Right, okay. Now on computer page 91. Oh, the very first bullet on the page. It says the petitioner will adhere to all township ordinances. Not accepted with this use, accepted is not spelled, it's not that word. It's E X C E P T D. Got it?
I got it, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Then the third bullet. The, I'm sorry, the fourth bullet, last bullet, events and use of the property shall not exceed. No, I guess that's all right. Fine, let me just, bear with me a minute. Oh, go down to the site plan. Where it says moved by Commissioner Mortensen. The third bullet says the plantings as displayed on the site are accepted as shown given that the plants exceed and then scratch the word above and the, or I scratched the word above, exceed the ordinance. You don't need above, it's redundant. Okay, that's, those are the corrections.
Got it. Thank you.
That's significant, insignificant maybe, but these minutes may get to be real important. So with that, I second the motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Guys have it. Motion carries. Do I have a, a motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Certainly.
That we adjourn the May 10th, 2020 Planning Commission meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Both. Meeting is adjourned.